We'll get the board members, we'll start our meeting at seven out of respect for the audience. Good evening and welcome to the February 4th fiscal year 2021 annual operating public hearing of the Prince George's County Board of Education. I would like to ask everyone to please turn off your wireless communication devices as they may interfere with the microphones and the taping of our meeting. At this point, Ms. Berkeley, would you please call the roll?
Ms. Ahmed?
Here.
Ms. Boozer Strather?
Here.
Mr. Burrows?
Here.
Mr. Montero?
Here.
Mr. Murray?
Here.
Mrs. Queen?
Mrs. Shepherd?
Here.
Mr. Swan?
Present.
Mr. Thomas? Mr. Valentine? Mr. Wallace? Mrs. Williams?
Present.
Mr. Omo Lola? Dr. Thornton?
Present. The Board of Education is convened this evening for the sole purpose of receiving public commentary on its fiscal year 2021 operating budget. The Board of Education is scheduled to adopt its FY 21 operating budget on February 20th, 2020. Our board meeting that night will start at 7:00 PM. The Board of Education's recommended budget will then be forwarded to our county executive, Ms. Angela Osserbrook, who will develop her proposal and present it to the county council in March of 2020. In April, the Maryland State Legislature adopts its final budget, including amounts designated for school funding. The county council must adopt its budget for the Prince George's County by the end of May. The Board of Education is necessary, then reconciles its budget to the county as approved as approved, and approves this regularly scheduled budget at a meeting on June 20th of 2020, or in June, don't know whether it's going to be on the 20th or not. Colleagues, we will now hear from our registered speakers. This is the board's opportunity to hear from the community, so board members will not address any comments that the community members might make. You will have three minutes to address the board. At the sound of the buzzer, would you please complete your final sentence? I would like to ask our first of 13 speakers to please come forward. Her name is Catherine Agarla. She's a ninth grade student at Parkdale High School. Is she here? And I don't see her, so I'll next go to Thalia Washington regarding Higher Learning. Ms. Washington, please come forward. And if Ms. Michelle Clark would prepare to speak after Ms. Washington. Ms. Washington, please proceed. Make sure the mic is on.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Thalia Washington, and I am the Executive Director at Higher Achievement, not Higher Learning, Higher Achievement. Higher Achievement is an after-school academic enrichment and mentoring program serving middle school students. At Higher Achievement, we believe that talent is everywhere, but opportunity is not. Higher Achievement closes the opportunity gap during the critical middle school years by leveraging the power of communities, much like the vibrant community here in the county. Our proven model provides a rigorous learning environment, caring role models, and a culture of high expectations resulting in college-bound scholars. Higher Achievement actually has a 40-year history of successfully serving middle school students in DC, and today we serve over 500 scholars in multiple school-based locations in DC and in Alexandria. Ninety-five percent of Higher Achievement alumni go on to graduate from high school on time and ready for college. I'm very proud to be here and to share that last year, Higher Achievement launched its first expansion here in Prince George's County. In the summer of 2019, we launched our program at Greenbelt Middle School, where 63 6th and 7th grade scholars, we call our student scholars, engaged in a six-week summer academy filled with academic courses to prevent summer learning loss, free college tours, and career-focused field trips. We are now halfway through our after-school academy, where those same scholars participate in after-school programming three days a week with academic support, college and career readiness enrichment, and they are paired with two adult mentors who work with the scholars in small groups in both STEM and humanities. I'm here tonight to thank both the school board and Dr. Goldson for supporting rigorous out-of-school-time programs like Higher Achievement. Higher Achievement supports your FY 21 budget areas in a number of ways. We are a data-driven organization with an academic focus. Our outcome goal each year is for scholars in our program to increase one letter grade or achieve an A or B in math and English language arts. And we also focus on college and career readiness opportunities for middle school students. Research shows that quality after-school programs boost academics, reduce crime, and improve student behavior. In DC, for example, 47% of juvenile-involved crimes occur between 2:00 PM and 6:00 PM every day. And every dollar invested in out-of-school-time programming saves $2.50 in crime-related costs. In summary, there are many reasons why both the academic and out-of-time, um, community-related benefits for investing in out-of-school time matter just as much as the investments that are made about what's happening during the school day. At Higher Achievement, we feel the work that we're doing clearly aligns with the work that you're investing in during school time. And again, just want to say thank you for continuing to invest in high-quality out-of-school-time programs like ours, as well as all of the many others that serve students after the school bell rings. Thanks again for all that you're doing for young people during the school day and out-of-school time.
Thank you, Ms. Washington. The next speaker is Michelle Clark regarding spending priorities.
Okay, you guys aren't taking into account I'm short, but that's okay. Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I just came here to talk to you a little bit about trauma-informed instruction and the need to keep restorative practices in the forefront in this next budget cycle. We need the restorative practices because our children have trauma at home. Some of them, recent immigrants, bring their trauma with them. Many others have seen things on the streets that you and I might never imagine. And either way, they need as much support from school counselors, school psychologists, and other specialists to make sure that they are ready to learn. Because if you don't know about trauma, one of the things I know is that if you've suffered an extreme trauma, you're not in any mindset to learn anything. And our youngest students, believe it or not, have also suffered many traumas, even some of my students, and I teach four-year-olds. So there have been people who, some of my students, one of my students actually saw her father pistol-whip her mother and beat her senseless in the front seat of their car. She came to school the next day, and she slapped one of my children across the face. I couldn't figure out what was going on. I knew something was wrong because this wasn't her typical behavior. I mean, yes, she could be a little bit pushy, a little bit aggressive at times, but it still didn't fit. And her great-grandmother came in to see me a few weeks later and told me what she had witnessed just the night before that. And all of a sudden, it all made sense. This same little girl is by now probably in about eighth grade. By third grade, she ended up being identified as emotionally disturbed and ended up in a special school. And one of the things I struggled with when she returned to the school I was teaching at was trying to explain to her teachers what this child has seen in her life. And all they could say was, "She acts up, she doesn't pay attention, she tries to get other kids going, dah 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 dah." Nobody took the time to care enough about her to give her what she needed so she could have stayed at our school. It's easier to identify and send out than it is to take the time to make that personal connection with your students. I cried for that little girl for days. Please make sure you prioritize our students who have seen the most trauma in their lives. They need all the support we can give them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark, for your comments. The next speaker is Jessie Simmons regarding librarian media services. And if Sony Woodley would prepare to speak after Ms. Simmons.
Good evening, Honorable Board Chair and Board Members. Thank you for the opportunity to speak once again. My name is Jessie Simmons, and I am the full-time library media specialist at Delargo High School. I've worked in Prince George's County for over 18 years. I started as a classroom teacher and embraced the opportunity to become a library media specialist because of my love for reading and my aspiration to instill in others the same desire. I have worked as a media specialist at every level, and I've seen how eager our elementary students are to read. Unfortunately, this desire wanes as they get older. I had the pleasure of opening the media center at the first green school in our county, Vansville Elementary School. This was my last full-time assignment at the elementary level. While there, I served a population of 900-plus students, who I worked with on a weekly basis. My students were able to visit the library at least once a week, where they learned library skills, technology skills, and checked out print resources. Being at my full-time, being a full-time at my school gave me an advantage to empower my students with skills they would need throughout their academic careers and beyond. Contrary to popular belief, students do not instinctively know how to navigate the abundance of information available to them through traditional and digital resources. Scholastic 2016, the Scholastic 2016 study called "School Libraries Work" also mentions the following data when it comes to the use of digital resources. Seventy-five percent of students have no idea how to locate articles and resources they need for their research. Sixty percent don't verify the accuracy or reliability of the information they find. Forty-four percent do not have, know how to integrate knowledge from their different sources. Our high schools have been staffed with a full-time media specialist who are cultivating 21st-century citizens. It's equally important in the lower-grade levels in order to prepare them with skills they will need to use in high school. Halftime personnel cannot be effective in their role because the lack of time impedes their function and curtails their abilities to impact student achievement. The media center should be the hub of the school building and should be open for business every day to be effective. As such, they are an invaluable resource to everyone. It is based on the evidence and the impact I have made and continue to make in my community that I stand here tonight and ask you to consider staffing every school with a full-time certified library media specialist. This move will be one that, when made, will be another step towards the success of our students both here and beyond. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Simmons, for your comments. The next speaker is Sony Woodley. Please come forward, and if Nikia Nicholson would prepare to speak.
Good evening. My name is Sony Woodley, and I'm a library media specialist at Nicholas Or Middle School and Hidesville Elementary School. I'm also a Prince George's County native and a graduate of PGCPS schools. While obtaining my undergraduate and graduate degrees at Towson University, I always knew I wanted to give back to my community and become an educator for PGCPS. As a first-year media specialist, working in my dream field has been rewarding, but splitting time between two schools has its challenges. I feel disconnected from both school communities, and every time I return to a school, at least one student always asks me, "Why weren't you here yesterday?" or says, "I wish you could be here every day." You have heard from a few of my colleagues, who are full-time media specialists at other meetings, and they have shared their ability to collaborate with staff and provide students with a daily service of literature and information literacy skills. And our students need that as 21st-century thinkers. This school year, I have been consistently absent at collaborative and team meetings because of my dual placement. My input on initiatives and projects usually come in the form of a bullet list read off by a full-time colleague of mine. I believe a fellow media specialist said it best at the last meeting, halftime is only half as good. I'm here asking you to give each school a full-time 1.0 librarian and give our students a chance to acquire the information literacy skills needed to be college and career-ready. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Ms. Woodley. The next speaker is Ms. Nicholson, and if Kristi Lynch would prepare to speak next.
Good evening. If you could indulge me for a few minutes, and for my millennial leaders, if you could just act like you know what I mean, because I'm going to take you back to 1990. I was a 10th-grade student, too embarrassed to ask for help because my math teacher would make me feel this small. At the time, I ended up hating math, hated math. In fact, I even hated going to school on B-days. The thought of going into the classroom made me physically ill. And as you can imagine, it was life-changing for me. Well, fast forward, I'm now an educator. And instead of blaming, what I do is think, what if my teacher didn't know how to reach me? What if she didn't understand the impact that teaching me about a growth mindset could be life-changing in a way that would change my life generationally? What if she was able to show me and help me to connect with understanding what productive struggle really meant? To help me understand that that's a part of the growth process? What if my principal at that time was able to come inside of that classroom more than two times a year and help my teacher be able to radar and reach children like me? What if? Lots of what-ifs. Well, the fact of the matter is, this county has some beautiful opportunities, beautiful opportunities to change the world. But it starts with training and development of our leaders. Because many of them simply just don't know. Because you're a great teacher doesn't make you a great coach. Because you're a great coach doesn't make you a great administrator. Because you're a great administrator doesn't make you a great central office leader. It starts with training. And so I asked this board, the leaders, to think about how can we identify our bright spots within the county, study them, analyze them, break them apart, and learn from our mistakes. As an administrator, as an educator, I've made lots of mistakes, but those mistakes have turned into beautiful opportunities to get better. So I asked this board to start prioritizing, look at some of the things that we do really well. What are the bright spots within our county? And let's capitalize, and let's leverage those things. I ask you to consider those things. From the bottom of my heart, I come in peace, and I'm here to help you. Let's change the world. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Kristi Lynch, if you'll come forward, please. I don't see... Yes, is that Ms. Lynch? Thank you. And if Tommy Makela would please prepare to speak. Ms. Lynch, please proceed.
All right. Good evening. I am an educator here in Prince George's County, and I come to speak with you this evening about making sure that our conditional teachers are sufficiently cared for. I think that it is of great importance that we shed some light on what has been happening with our conditional teachers. It doesn't make sense to me that we have teachers who are working in the system, taking courses, and then being dropped because of some technicality or for a lack of support. So it is my hope and prayer that we will carefully look at the budget and determine what we can do to make sure that teachers that are conditionally licensed are able to take the courses that they need, and that certification is making sure that those credits are being reviewed and considered to make sure that they have what they need to become certified classroom teachers. In this climate of classroom teacher shortage, we cannot afford to lose potentially great teachers. And it's on us to make sure, I keep saying make sure, because we can't make it happen if we don't provide the tools that are necessary. So I plead with you to look very carefully about what can be done, because if we have them working for two years and then drop them, then we bring another set of teachers in, and if they don't make it drop then, we're just spinning our wheels. So that's my primary focus. And then second to that, I ask that you make sure that restorative practices are implemented with fidelity across the county. We have cases where people talk about restorative practice, teachers are uncertain about what it means, and they think that it means that children cannot be suspended from school. And it's not that they can't be suspended from school, but it's that we need to put things in place that keep them from having to be suspended from school. And that everyone that is called to implement it understands what restorative practices is and how to use it to better serve our students. If we want to see growth in the classroom, we want to see better instruction, we better make sure that these behaviors that are causing challenges for our teachers are put into check in a loving way, in a loving way. And that's where we're struggling. So teachers are becoming discouraged because they feel like, well, the principal says we can't suspend, there's nothing we can do, they just keep cycling back in the classroom, my 29 children are suffering because of the one. And we have to change that dialogue. What are we going to do about that? And I'm asking you to look deep at that because it's impacting our children and the great that they could do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynch, for your comments. The next speaker is Tommy Makela, if you'll come forward. And if Mark Johnson would prepare to speak.
Good evening. My name is Tommy Makela. I am from Hackett Creek. First, a good news for you all. My son is a senior at Octon Hill High School, so moving forward, you will probably be seeing less of me here at these hearings. Also, I want to thank Mr. Rhodes and the Budget Office team for working with our organization's Prince George's County Advocates for Better Schools again on the budget Q and A session. We really appreciate it. I think it's, even though turnout this year wasn't that great, but still, it's an important venue for us parent leaders in the, in the school system to really be able to ask questions and understand the budget better. So we really do appreciate it. I think the quality of the people may overrule the quantity, at least this year. When it comes to the actual budget, I want to applaud the CEO's proposed budget when it comes to those savings that were identified in the central administration. It makes it me feel a bit worthwhile, the time that I've spent here several years coming to talk about the need to put direct resources from the central administration to the classroom, it makes it seem worthwhile when now, second year in a row, I see that actually in the budget. So thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I hope that effort continues year after year because I think that is an important thing to do. My final point that I wanted to mention is more of a long-term budget issue that I think you, as the board and the system leadership, do need to grapple with. And it is the issue of the needs of our neighborhood schools versus the specialty programs. And over the last few years, we have seen our specialty programs grow quite a bit, and we have fairly extensive specialty programs. And my child has been able to take part in, and they've been wonderful. But on the other hand, there is the issue of resources. We have limited resources, and some of the issues that we are really dealing with, like the transportation, the spread of these, and just ever more having specialty programs that really strains the transportation issues, for example, for us. So I think we do need to be very, moving forward, I think you really need to, long and hard, any ideas of expanding this specialty program, and really trying to maybe invest in the neighborhood schools, because I think the end goal should be that every child, be it elementary, middle school, or high school, every child and every parent feels comfortable sending their kids to the neighborhood schools. And I think that's where we are falling short at this time. Some of the specialty programs are great, but we should have the schools so that all parents and all students will feel comfortably in all of our schools, in our neighborhood schools, because those are really the fabric of our county. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir, for your comments. The next speaker is Mark Johnson, and if Ms. Dana Parker would prepare to speak next.
Greetings. My name is Mark Anthony Johnson, Sr. Today is a special day. It's my father's birthday. I came in this school when it's desegregation. For the first time, I was raised with a single mom, and for the first time, looking at my dad visit any of my schools was when he saw my daughter going across the stage. What I see where is an opportunity is parenthood, fatherhood. Parents are expected to be understood through the parents' rights. But it's hard for a parent to be, so somebody can understand a parent. Communication bureau, parental partnership, voice, example, the use of paper duplicate curriculum via email, or one sheet or one copy per family could probably save y'all some money. I applaud Belinda Queen for addressing the importance of parenthood. New approach what I see would help is being proactive. Well, now I've joined with 10 members, and one of my colleagues here, parent, and we're going to approach y'all collectively with a collective body. What we want to support is students with low GPA and possibly the students who face the judiciary system. We want to try to help pivot through music, arts, and other things we can agree collectively. Thank you so much for hearing my voice.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Ms. Parker, if you please come forward, and if Ms. Linda Redman would prepare to speak.
You could have left me some of his time. No. So, oh, I don't want to stop the flow of things. I want to give kudos to Mr. Rhodes. You know, I want to go on record in giving him kudos, as well as everybody else. So I just want to talk about a couple of things real quick. As many of you know, I actually advocate in my spare time for specifically educational issues within Prince George's County on a state and local and national level. And I've gone around the county and asked specific things of the constituents in all of the districts, because Prince George's County as a whole is where I live. And there are a couple of things that kind of came up, so I just want them to be thought of. If not for this cycle, definitely thinking about for the next one, because I know Dr. Goldson, as well as the board, is far-reaching in their thought process. First, as always, support for proper charter schools, proper support for charter schools. I just think there needs to be more oversight and accountability. I, you know, I've been to mostly all the school board meetings in the past years. It always frustrates me that the charter schools are above you or standing before you, asking for renewal without like proper information to all the school board members, or school board members having not even visited a charter school at any point over the course of their tenure on the school board. So that would be one thing. Also, moving documents to be available electronically, such as MOUs. I did speak to Mr. Rhodes about this. I know that there's a cost associated with it, but I can tell you now, I was just in a meeting on the county level, and I was kind of fighting in relation to the perception of Prince George's County Public Schools, and I was referencing MOUs that I knew about. So it was just kind of hard, having that conversation, having that dialogue, fighting for my school system with other residents. And I'm not able to say, oh, well, you can go right here and see what we do. So just thinking about that. And then support for the 7th grade in relation to a PSAT prep program. I know they test in 8th grade, but a lot of the schools, the middle schools, they don't really have a SAT prep program, which kind of leads me concerned about, okay, now you're taking this test in the 8th grade, which kind of, you know, would put you in certain tracks, and you don't even have the viability to understand maybe taking a PSAT. And then finally, welcoming schools. We know the dynamic of our community is changing, or not even just changing, being more reflective of what it's always been. And welcoming schools touches directly on the LGBTQ community and things of that nature, and making sure that our students have a warmer welcoming environment, whether it's their families or themselves that are a part of that community as a whole. And we want to make sure that our school system is reflective of And we want to make sure that our school system is reflective of that because we just want to make sure that we educate the whole child, no matter their disposition, no matter what they come from. And we also want to avoid any sort of gaps and the legal monies that are tied to those gaps if we don't, you know, properly prepare ourselves beforehand. Thank you for those comments. And again, those can be for this year or leading into next year.
Thank you, Ms. Parker, for your comments. The next speaker is Ms. Redman, Ms. Linda Redman. And if Cassie Morris would prepare to speak, please.
Good evening, Dr. Golson, Dr. Thornton, and Board Members. First, I commend you for the hard work, for the partnership, including the recently announced leadership at the University of Maryland. I have a few concerns that if addressed might make parents happier. Please continue to encourage schools to establish PTA PTSAs. Having a parent engagement liaison is not the same as a PTA PTSA that is accountable to the principal, teachers, parents, and to the state PTA organization. Please consider ways to provide children who are affected by long-term vacancies in their classrooms with more monitoring of their progress. You mentioned summer credit recovery classes for middle and high school, but that does not seem to be what these students need. They have not failed, but have lost content, not by their fault, but because of a long-term teacher vacancy. They may need refreshers, makeup resources, enhancements, or a component added to the bridge program. The proposed budget includes an increase of 330 teacher positions with only two FTE as special education teachers. With an increase of only two FTE for special education, are parents and teachers in special ed being heard? Please enhance and improve communications concerning bullying. I believe you are serious about bullying, but that is not what is really communicated. I looked for bullying in the guide to addressing questions and concerns, and that is a big concern, but it was not there. I finally searched to find information about bullying and I noticed that in October, there was quite a bit of activity in the schools on bullying. But that's a daily problem. So I would encourage you to have, to do more communication on bullying and to, because bullies also know, I mean, have the same communication that I have. I don't see as much information about bullying as I think we need to have. Finally, many retired professionals live in the county, not only from the federal government, but from education, education systems and neighboring neighborhood jurisdictions, from colleges and universities, and more. You have already tapped some as substitute teachers. Others may not want to go into the classroom, but they have wisdom, knowledge, and experiences to contribute to projects and committees. Please pursue their involvements, involvement. Encourage principals and PTA leaders to seek out these retired professionals and press them for their involvement. Citizen involvement is good for the county as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Redman. The next speaker is Cassie Morris. And if Jessie Varick, I think I'm pronouncing the last name right, would prepare to speak.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Cassie Morris and I'm here this evening on behalf of the LGBTQ Dignity Project. And I'm here this evening to support the Welcoming School Initiative, which is run by the HRC. It is a program for elementary educators and personnel to use professional development lesson plan to ensure that school embraces family and student of the LGBTQ community. This evening, I'm going to read a letter from a former student from Prince George's County School. "I am providing this written testimony in order to give insight into what it was like being a LGBTQ plus Prince George's County student and to add my support to the Welcoming School Initiative. My name is Isaiah Lawrence and I'm a 25-year-old Black queer transgender man. I spent 18 years of my life in Prince George's County and had attended Prince George's County Public School from third to 12th grade. I attended New Carlton Charles Middle School and graduated from Partdale High School. In eighth grade, I was struggling with severe depression and come out as a lesbian. During this time, there was no LGBTQ resources available for me at Charles Carroll. Although now I recognize that I'm not a lesbian, but I'm a transgender male experiencing gender dysphoria. My experience with Prince George's County Public School was through the lens of a lesbian girl slash woman. In school, the only time I heard about trans was when my classmate was using slurs or mock other students. Since there was no intervention from teachers to discipline students using transphobia slur, and if I was, if I were there to associate myself with trans, I would be a target for ridicule and potential, potential danger. Sadly, as a Prince George's County Public School, instead of learning to accept my gender and sexuality as a held core of part of my identity, I learned shame, which caused internalized transphobia and homophobia. It is necessary for me to repress my feelings about my gender and my body in order to successfully and safely graduate from Partdale High School. The transition from middle school into high school as a lesbian, as it challenges, as middle school teachers frowned upon my interest in girls. Their disposition was uncomfortable and cold, causing me to feel uneasy and sometimes suicidal. Friends and peers who identified as gay, male, or female students were perceived as having feminine traits, they were ridiculed and harassed by other students and male staff. It is unsettling that teachers were unable to step up out of their biases to do their jobs and protect these students. We did not feel supported or affirmed by our school system overall." And I'm going to end with this, and quote, "The writer wrote, 'The Prince George's County School System failed to support me as a gender variant youth and it continues to fail by not preparing its teachers to support a LGBTQ student. It is my hope that the Prince George's County Board of Education understand the importance of funding the Welcoming School Initiative in order to foster a safe and supportive environment for LGBTQ plus student staff of Prince George's County Public School.'" Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. The final speaker is Jessie Varick. Am I pronouncing that right? You'll help me, I'm sure.
Hi, I'm Jessie Vavrick.
All right, thank you.
I taught five years science at Hyattsville Middle School. I helped lead the volunteer after-school program, KEMS, there, and I'm a member of Maryland Trans Unity, which meets monthly in Prince George's County. I'm here to speak because there is a need for these trauma-informed programs, the Welcoming Schools programs, in Prince George's County Public Schools because there is a lack of understanding. There are gaps. I've had students come out to me every year and when there are support programs for other students, they might find themselves unwelcome by other support networks without something that deliberately supports them in family and in other programs around their community. These students, if they feel uncomfortable, if they feel unsafe, they are not able to learn. That is something understood by everybody in this room as Maslow's hierarchy of needs. The need to feel safe will supersede any ability to learn anything. We need these programs in Prince George's County public schools because we're a loving community. I was brought here by my best friend in college. She was one of the first people that truly accepted me. And I thought of this as a great place and I came here to join this wonderful and welcoming community. And I know that it can do better. I know that it can be better than what the gaps I've seen. But these gaps are not going to be erased without deliberate effort. We're not going to get there unless we actually look long and hard at where students fall through the gaps and actually do the work to educate not just our students, but our educators so they're truly able to support everyone here and make this a community that welcomes everyone. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you for coming to speak to us. That exhausts our speakers list. I want to thank everyone who came to speak to the board and the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.